On Tuesday, July 14th, 2020 at 7:00 PM via teleconference. Prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering and Alderman Schmidt will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty.
Everybody needs to be on mute.
Almighty God, we have the high honor. Hold on.
So you're logged into two different areas. I think that's what's causing it.
And June, you need to be on mute.
Sue, turn your speakers off.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with the spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the benefit and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As President of the Board of Aldermen, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor, as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are A) providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access Zoom, please refer to the agenda or the city's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, The meeting ID is 845-4368-2139 and the password is 590998. The public may also view the meeting via Channel 16. B) We providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashville's website at www.nashuanh.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall in the Public Health Department. C) Providing a means for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call 603-821-2049 and they will help you connect. D) Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. City Clerk, would please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
I am present. I can hear the proceedings and I am alone.
Alderman Clea.
I can hear you. I'm sorry, I am here. I can hear the proceedings. I am alone and I am social distancing.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here. I'm alone. I can hear everyone and I am practicing social distancing.
Alderman Down.
Yes, I'm here. I can hear everyone and I'm alone and practicing social distancing in accordance with the Governor's instructions.
Alderman Karen.
I'm here. I am alone. I am practicing social distancing and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Clemmons.
I am here. I am by myself and I can hear everyone and I'm staying at home per the Governor's orders.
Alderman Lopez.
Here, I can hear everybody. I'm alone and I'm practicing social.
Alderman Tanza.
I'm present. I'm alone. I am staying home per the Governor's orders and I can hear everyone.
Alderwoman Lou.
I'm here alone. I can hear you and I'm remotely attending because we're not open at City Hall.
Alderman Jerry.
I'm here. My wife is with me. I can hear everyone and I'm staying safer at home.
Alderman Schmidt.
I'm present. I'm alone. I can hear everyone and safe distancing for me.
Alderman Laws.
I'm here. I'm alone. I
Alderman Cleveland.
I'm here. I'm alone and I'm practicing social distancing.
Alderman Harriet Catherine.
I'm present. I can hear you. I'm alone and I'm practicing social distancing.
Alderman Wilshire.
I'm here. I'm alone and I am practicing social distancing.
You have 15 in attendance.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening Mayor Donches, Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton and Director Kleiner from the Administrative Services Division. Communications. Did we lose that clerk? Okay.
Would you like me to read for you?
That'd be great. Thank you, Donna.
Communication from Lori Wilshire, President, Board of Aldermen regarding calling a special board of Alderman meeting on July 14th, 2020.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file.
Patient from Kim Kleiner, Administrative Services Director regarding assessing department update, July 14th.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. So tonight we have an update on assessing and I would like to recognize Administrative Services Director Kim Kleiner for the assessing update. Director Kleiner.
Good evening and thank you very much, Madam President, members of the Board of Aldermen, members of the Board of Assessors who have joined us. I am here this evening with Nick Mizevich, who's the manager of infrastructure for the information technology team. And we are delighted to give you an update on what has happened in assessing since September, which was our last update to you. If acceptable with the Board, I'd like to share my screen for our PowerPoint presentation.
That's fine.
So hard to believe that it's been since September, since we were last here. But last September, when we joined you, we really focused on five key areas of improvement. We talked about transparency and customer service, how we had made implemented changes like putting everyone's property record card online, how we instituted the assessing monthly monitor, how we started televising Board of Assessor meetings. We talked about data collection and how we were now issuing sales verification letters to residents to gain more information from the residents directly. We talked about assessment change notification letters that were being issued. We talked about procedures and communication and weekly staff meetings that had been introduced and departmental updates that were given at each Board of Assessor meeting. We talked about how assessors were completing field logs and mileage reports, how we were dealing with property data accuracy. Now data inspectors and assessors were now including all activity into our CAMA system. And we talked about how we were going to begin a software and update mainly to AP5, an update to our CAMA system, which Mr. Mizevich is going to talk about in greater detail later. And we thank him. He's our expert. That's for sure. So after we met in October, David Cornell of Cornell Consultants completed an audit of the assessing department. And this is important going forward because this really informs you of a lot of the recommendations that the assessing department is looking to implement. Why we feel that his audit is very important to us is David Cornell is by far an expert in the world of assessing. So not only has he been an Assistant Director up at the New Hampshire DRA, a well-respected assessor in Manchester, but he's a Senior National Instructor for the International Association of Assessing Officers. He holds a number of very important and key appraisal licenses. And many communities throughout the country look to him for assessing assistance and for some very important audits when they're looking at how to improve their functions. So we've had the pleasure since October of dealing with Mr. Cornell. When he conducted his assessment, he looked at the visit history of all our accounts. He looked at our building property permits and property record card changes. He did an audit of 100 random sold properties. And he came up with this really eight key recommendations. And these are important and this is what is really forming as our structure as we look for improvements in our assessing department. So complete a full measure and list. We knew this. This was in fact in the management audit. Earlier in 2019, we had looked at this. We know this is now underway and we'll talk a little bit more about that. Develop a long-range schedule. When we say that, we're talking about inspections. We're talking about all the work that assessing has to do, sales verifications, and how we not only manage the day-to-day activities of assessing, but how we perform inspections for building permits and things of that sort. Record all inspections in AssessPro. So when Mr. Cornell performed his audit, what he found was not all of the assessors were recording their activity within our CAMA system. When an assessor goes out and visits a property, really they're visiting a property for a number of reasons. They're performing an inspection for an abatement. They're performing an inspection for a building permit. It could be a sales, a recent sale that they're qualifying. And that activity should always be included in our CAMA system with a date and the reason for that inspection. And that hadn't always been done. So we issued a directive immediately, even before Mr. Cornell had finished his audit, as soon as he came to us and said that that was one of his findings. He talked about developing annual inspection goals, recording every building and permit inspection, hiring of temporary data collectors, which we did back last October. We hired a few data collectors from KRT to assist us with some building permits. He talked about converting to a table-driven depreciation system, moving away from the EYB or effective year built, which we certainly discussed here at the Board before. This has to be done during a full measure and list and it has to be done with the issuance of a use path. And then he talked about updating the data collection manual prior to the full measure and list. And that's important to make sure that when you're going into the full measure and list, you are using data collection procedures the same across the board by all data collectors. And we completed that this past February with Vision. So I included his audit summary because I think that this is important. Because while Mr. Cornell did identify eight areas where we needed improvement, he also noted that some of these recommendations have been implemented or already had will have been implemented in the foreseeable future. We already had plans in place. We'd already identified them in the management audit. And he did note what we felt was true, that a lot of the issues within the assessing department would be handled by completing that full measure and list. And we knew that we were already actively moving in that direction. So the full measure and list, you can see we've outlined kind of a timetable for you here. The RFP was all, that process was through September. Then we had the review and the interviews of the candidates. We drafted a contract. We went through a contract process with the New Hampshire DRA, who were required to sign off on the contract. And it was February before we got to the Finance Committee with the contract and it was ultimately approved. Since then, I am happy to report that the full revaluation is going very smoothly. Very few complaints. And we've had a few hiccups with COVID in there, but we had the joint update and Vision, the New Hampshire DRA, our Board of Assessors held a startup meeting at the beginning of March. And then they began their data collection. And as you can see, a couple weeks later, COVID sprang, which caused some problems with interior inspections. And we needed to amend our contract with Vision for the safety of our residents and the safety of Vision staff. And so we did that and that was immediately approved by the DRA. And we suspended our interior inspections, continued with the exterior inspections and the taking of pictures for the property record cards. And that has continued. We have not resumed interior inspections as of yet. So because the full measure and list was required by the Board of Tax and Land Appeals, the city is required to file a quarterly update with them. And that was one, the first update, which was filed July 7th, was included in your package. And that's what was sent to the Board of Tax and Land Appeals. As you can see, it's quite thorough. We really walked through all of the bi-weekly reports that we get from Vision as well as an accurate timeline of everything that has taken place from March to the end of June. As you can see here, it's moving quite well. We're about 30% done. This is residential only. They have not begun commercial as of yet. But the important thing to note here is that they have only had 92 refusals. So out of over 7,500 measures, they've only had 92 refusals to date. And that's very good and Vision's very pleased, as are we. We do hold bi-weekly meetings with the city and the Vision project team. The project's on schedule. As we said, good participation, very few complaints. So that's the first recommendation by Cornell Consultants. The second one, or actually the seventh one on the list, but the second one I want to deal with here was convert to the table-driven depreciation system. As I said, you won't see that until 2022 and that's when Vision will complete that, when they move to that section of the revaluation. And here you can see, we presented this map when June Perry, the project lead for Vision, came to the Board of Assessors in June. And that YouTube video is up if you wanted to review her conversation and her update to the Board of Assessors. And as you can see by the shaded areas, at this point, they had really just started Ward 3, but the residential properties in Ward 1 and 2 had been completed. So another area that we wanted to look at was Cornell's recommendation on developing a long-range schedule and developing annual inspection goals. So we contracted with Cornell Consultants to create a management data collection tool, which is called Power BI. And that's the analytic tool that we chose to use. Cornell Consultants is very knowledgeable. They're actually a certified instructor on this tool. And they came in and they helped us put together some internal and external dashboards. And what it does is it helps you visualize your data and share insights across your organization. So Cornell Consultants takes this Power BI system and it's connected right to our CAMA system. And they extract the data to create these dashboards. And it can be updated. It's nightly. We've chose to do it nightly. It could be two or three times a day. That is really up to you. We would like to put the external dashboards on our website for the use of our residents. While the internal dashboards are really providing management information, things that will help us create those long-range schedules and goals. And I'll give you an example in just a moment. But one of the other things that it's important to note is our GIS team is also working on an updated GIS viewer. So we're dealing with CDM Smith and they're working on that. We expected to have that ready by now, but the GIS team was assisting the EOC during the COVID. And they were working on some important tools for the EOC, so we put this aside. They're also working on a new residential comparable sales tool. This is a tool that we were asked to work on by residents who were completing abatements and were having trouble looking for comparable sales in our current system. So we actually expect that within the next month. But back to the Power BI, this is just an example. And this will be connected, this particular dashboard, to our website. So what it does is, as you can see, it gives you the number of inspections for all years. So you're seeing 127,000 up in the left-hand corner of the screen. In the right-hand corner, you can see there's a dropdown for activity results. If you click in that dropdown, it will give you a bunch of different types of inspections. And you could click on that and you will refresh the data and it will tell you by inspection type how many have been conducted and when. In the middle of the screen, you will see an activity date. You can change the dates that you'd like to search. One of the things we felt that this might help residents with is as our full revaluation moves along, you're going to see these numbers jump. Because now we are going to be out doing inspections of all of our properties. So we wanted to give residents the opportunity to see that and kind of track it on their own through our website. These colored boxes that you see, that's another way. You could click on the box. So a measure and list is a type of inspection. You could click on that purple box and it will tell you now in the upper left-hand corner, exactly how many of those 127 inspections were measures and lists? Or how many were external only? Or how many were field reviews? So it's an interesting tool. It's very interactive. And that's one that will be available on our website. The second tool is the average sale price for homes. Both the average and the median sale price by year. So if you see in the middle of the screen, the building style, you could choose the building style. Again, the data will refresh and it will show you the information based upon that building. You could change the years that you're searching. You could change what type of verification you're looking for. So do you want to look at deeds? Do you want to look at MLS data? Do you want to look at certain neighborhoods within? And we felt this was one tool that may help again our residents when they're searching. And we felt this was one tool that may help again our residents when they're searching for that abatement information. Other people that may find this data informative would be real estate phasers, things of that sort. So those are two of the tools that will be accessible on the website. Now I'm going to turn it over to Nick Mizevich, who's going to talk about the AP5 upgrade.
All right. Thank you, Director Kleiner, Madam President, members of the Board of Alderman, members of the Board of Assessing. All right. So when we started this project, I had to become familiar with both the new system, which we refer, we refer to as AP5, and the existing system that the assessing department has been using for several years, which we refer to as Classic. So right off the bat, AP5 has a much improved user interface over the classic Kama system. It's easier and more friendly to use. And it also gives a full-screen view of the system as opposed to a tiny window as in Classic. So our staff can see more information at one time. There are multiple ways to search for information, which I have a slide that I will show later on what this entails. It also has auto-field dropdowns. So as soon as you type information that you're searching for, the dropdown will automatically find anything that matches that. So again, a lot easier and quicker to find information. We can open any section in this and have multiple sections pinned for quick display. So instead of toggling back and forth as we had to do in the old system, it's all right there, right in front on the main screen for our staff to click through and get to whatever they use most often. Info for past years is quickly accessible without having to switch to a different database. Again, with AP5, everything is in a single database, all past years. In Classic, each year had its own database. So we are much better off with the AP5 as the assessing department can quickly go back to historic information if they are researching any sort of issue that arises. And with that, the new system also has the ability to change the color scheme for what they're looking at, the user interface. So it gives attention, it brings the attention of you're in a different year if they're not in the current year. So they know right away if they are where they need to be. It has improved filter capability. The filter function in the old system was not that great. The new one is much more powerful, and it's very easy to use. It's based on what, what they call SQL queries, which is the database that the city uses and this application is hooked into. There's also a new tool such as lookup grid, which again, very powerful, can look up a lot of data at a, with a very few clicks. And the staff is really excited about that feature. They, they use it quite a bit. Historic images and sketches are preserved for previous years. In AP5, this is all in the database. It's not separate files like the old system. So you can have an image and sketch for a particular property for 2018. And then you can have a new sketch and an image for 2019, and the database keeps track of all that information. So as staff looks back, they can see the gradual changes, all in the same system. And also, we can hide closed accounts using a simple checkbox. That's important. So we don't necessarily need to be reporting on accounts that have been closed, but it's good to have that historic information at the tip of your fingers. All right, Kim, can you? All right. So here's the screenshot. And yes, you'll see my name. I am a citizen of the City of Nashua, and I consent to have my information displayed. So we don't run into any problems. All right. So the year toggle, that's where you would switch back for the current year versus previous years, as well as going forward. We could also program information for a future year, which will be very helpful. Because then, like, at the end of the year, tax season, ordinarily, the staff would have to wait until the tax process has been completed. With AP5, they don't have to wait. We can set the new year, and they can start entering information for the future. The hide closed accounts, it's just a simple checkbox, whether they're displayed or not. And in the purple, this is what I was referring to as multiple ways you can search for information. The account number, personal ID, the street, or the owner. And the, okay, I'm sorry, Kim. Not too far.
Okay.
Okay. Go, go, go back. You're going forward. There we go. All right. Here is a screenshot of a couple of examples of the sections that can be pinned. And it's based on whatever staff is working on the most. So on the top, you have the account detail. You have the building section, land section, and special features and yard items. Another person could have the exemptions, appeals, permits, and the owners. Or, you know, the sky's the limit. However, whatever information that they use most, they can have pinned. And if they don't have it, they're not using it at any one time. They can simply close that and then re-select it, which is on a menu which was not included in the slide, unfortunately. All right, Kim. All right. Here is the filter function. We can select just about any field in the database. As you see on the left-hand side, those are the different tables. We simply expand them to get to the fields. We create the expression, put in a value that we are looking for, such as, you know, I want all building permits that were created for 2020. I build that query. And it hit the query button, and it gives that results in the filter result on the bottom right-hand side. What assessing can do next is save that filter, and it will, the system will navigate through just those parcels or accounts that meet that criteria. So they don't have to go keep searching for it over and over again. It'll be right there for them. They can just scroll through everything. Another nice feature with AP5 is everything's exportable to Excel. So they do a filter on something, and they can quickly export that information to an Excel spreadsheet. All right, Kim. Along with the upgrade comes enhanced security. It's now integrated with the city's Windows accounts, so no additional password for users to remember. This is referred to as single sign-on. So it's great for IT, so we can quickly manage who has access to the system. So if, as people come on or as people leave the city, we can quickly take care of that within our normal duties. We do not have to go and remember to take care of some other authentication mechanism. Permissions are now based on roles instead of individuals for easier maintenance. So example, like, the clerks will have certain permissions that they're allowed to do. The assessors will have certain permissions that they're allowed to do. We can do it by read-only. We can control who can create. We can control who can modify, and we can control who can delete any record in the system. There's an increased granularity. We can do the permissions down to a field. We don't have to do a specific form or table as was the previous system. We can go down to the field level, which is very nice and makes life much easier for IT, because that's less stuff that we have to fix in case someone does something that they shouldn't do. We have the ability to make a field required before a save can be made. So this is good as we rewrite the procedures. So there's certain information that we want to capture, and it forces whoever's entering that information to add that particular info. So again, we have it tracked for historic purposes. Anything that is changed in the system is now audited, so we can see what fields were changed by who and when. And previous years are easily locked down to prevent changes being made. For example, as soon as we prepare the system for December tax bills, we put that year in read-only status, so no one can make any changes. Again, we can keep the future year open to create additional changes. So it keeps them working. We have, we don't have the time lapse that we had with the classic version. And finally, where we're currently standing with the integration. We conducted dual entry in the old and new systems for three months to verify functionality. This gave the staff time to become familiar with the new system, where things were located. It gave us the ability to make sure that the new system's calculating things the same way that we, that were being done in the old system. This has been, the AP5 has been integrated with the city's new building permit application, Civic Gov. So the two systems are passing data back and forth. As new accounts are created, they get passed up to Civic Gov. As permits are created by the building department, they come into AssessPro. Also been integrated with the city's GIS system. So the multiple maps that we have online, it is feeding information out to that on a daily basis, so that information is updated daily. So a citizen can go to any one of our GIS maps that contain information, assessing information, and see the current information. It's also been integrated with the city's tax collection, collection system, Munis. So we can process the information and send it to the tax department, and they can upload it for the tax billing cycle. Importantly, we removed the dependency on admins for the exemptions and credits process. And the final dependency on admins for the abatement process will be converted by the end of this month. We are in the process of just verifying that, actually not verifying, creating the same type of file that Munis needs for the abatements. We are also implementing mobile tablets for field entry or for data entry in the field. This will be completed by end of July, which will allow the assessors to make changes right in the field. So as they go out on an inspection, they don't have to write on a piece of paper and bring it back. They make this, they make the changes right in the system, and it's live. So as soon as they make that change, it's there for the rest of the team to act on it. The MS1 report that we file with the state matches that of the old system for December 2019 and the July 2020 tax bills. This was important because we needed to make sure we are providing the same information out of both systems. We are also working with Patriot to develop a custom property record card that is easy to read for both citizens and assessors. This is also planned to be done by the end of July. There's information on their base card that the city does not use, so it's pointless to have it displayed. We want to have the information displayed that is important for us and our citizens. We are also upgrading the over-the-counter application that citizens use to look up current information when they come into City Hall. I'm sorry. I got to scroll down here. Wrong slide. Okay, there we go. And this will be completed by the end of August, so it's going to be a snap-in to the new system. Very different from how the old system is. It's going to be the same look and feel as staff has, and with the ability to look up the information as, as, as was done in the past. All right, Kim, that's all that I have.
Thank, thank you, Nick. So this was a really large project, and one that we could not have gotten completed without Nick's help, without that of IT. There was a lot of testing. It went a little longer than we thought. But I have to say that we had to be sure. There, there was no room for error here. So there was a lot of testing by a lot of different assessors and IT, and, and we thank them for that. And I'll move, I'm going to move a little quicker because I know you have a full Board of Alderman meeting to get to. Important to note, tomorrow night at Finance meeting, you will see a contract in front of you for a consultant, assessing supervisor that we hope the, the Finance Committee will pass. Rex Norman is not unknown to the city. He worked for us years ago and served on our Board of Assessors and has been the chief assessor for Wyndham for a number of years. And we believe that while we are still looking for a chief assessor, that search has not stopped, that Mr. Norman will provide us with great technical advice. Also, there were, you know, COVID set everyone back a little, and some changes needed to be made for COVID. So we had some temporary policies that needed to be implemented for abatements and building permits, and those were approved by our board. As Nick noted, we're still working on the tablets, and we're going to have our first instructional use with our assessors this Friday. And then again, tomorrow night at Finance, you're going to see a contract with Inception Technologies. This is for the scanning of all of our property record files. One thing that we found during the COVID working remote experience was that our assessors really needed access to these files. So we're looking at using DocuWare software to make these records easily accessible to our staff remotely. So while they're on those tablets and they're working directly on the Kama system, they can also pull up a full, a full property record file and have that information in front of them. Important to note, and everyone's always very, seems very interested in the number of abatements that we receive. So for 2019, gonna see a drop. We had 164 versus the 393 from 2018, which was an update year. I take this as an indication. And that is one that we're happy to see when those abatements go down. Moving forward, it's been asked a lot, so what do our assessors do during a full revaluation? No, we don't get time off. Their workload does not actually decrease. Our assessors have a lot of required training for their certification, which we have been holding off on because of the AP5 upgrade. We needed all staff in. We had a number of changes, as you can see, from September's update to this one. So they need to get out there and get that required certification. We have professional development that we have lined up, both with the NHAAO and then some with the IAO. Some of our assessors are interested in taking some appraisal courses. Some of our assessors are interested in taking some appraisal courses, and we, we strongly advise our assessors to have more professional development and education as we do all our staff. We have building modifications coming up, building of a new customer service area, including ADA access. We're gonna get some more of that Power BI that we talked about earlier. We're all gonna learn that and become experts. And we're gonna deal with the full revaluation. We have to monitor the project. We have to meet with them. We have five property record cards, weekly building permits, attend weekly meetings. The assessors work with Vision every day of the project. And then we have to build our cyclical inspection process. We have to develop that so that when the full revaluation ends, we have a process of how we are going to ensure that all of our properties are inspected over a period of time. One of the goals, one of the strong goals from Cornell Consultants that needs to take place at the end of this rebound. So, Madam President, I'm sorry we are a little long, but pick any questions.
Thank you, Director Kleiner. Does anyone on the board have questions for Director Kleiner?
I do.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. It's actually not a question. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the update from the staff, the open and transparency of everything. I think that you're doing a fabulous job. You've answered all of my questions. I don't need to ask you anything because you've covered it all. Thank you very much for your dedicated service to our city. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, I have several questions.
Alderman Lou.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman. You know, I have like several items that I wasn't familiar with, and at this point, I, it is, it took a lot longer than I expected. And I don't know what to focus on, or for instance, you mentioned that GIS has been assisting EOC during the COVID, and I'm not sure what EOC is.
Emergency Operations Center.
Okay. And the 92 refusals, what did, what were they refusing? It was mentioned that there were 92 refusals, which was really good.
Yes, so when Vision data collectors approach the door, it's their practice to knock, they step back six feet. They inform the resident that they will be measuring the outside of the property, and that they will be taking some photographs that will be included on our property record file. Those 92 residents chose not to have the, the data collectors measure their property. They refused.
Well, that was just, can I follow up? I have, Madam Chairman, I-
Alderman Lou.
Okay. So that was just to measure the exterior. So in the case that that happens, I, I know that in the past it was discussed that at last resort, we'd have to have, I don't know, it's a legal warrant or some, something. So we can't just measure that without their permission, huh? And that would require a warrant of some type?
So even since those residents chose not to let the assessors measure at that time, all residents will receive a letter asking for an interior inspection or for an exterior inspection, also if it wasn't completed later on in the process. So we'll have, we will make another attempt. You know, could it have been that that was a bad time? Really a bad time for that resident? There's, there's many different reasons. But we will circle back, and we will make another attempt to complete that inspection.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? I wondered is, the Cornell report, is that? My recollection is that Dave Cornell was originally contracted to write a management dashboard reporting system. It has a contract change after December of 2019 to include a the report.
I'm sorry. So actually, Cornell Consulting was first worked on the assessment back last fall. And he worked with both the assessing and the, and the legal department at that point for the audit. The Power BI contract was later in February, March timeframe that he was brought in and contracted with to do the Power BI dashboard. Two different.
Okay, so the Power BI dashboards are currently up and running?
They are in, in final draft mode now. They are working. Mr. Cornell is working with our IT department so that we can get the public dashboards loaded to our website. And we are making some changes and final specifications to the internal tools.
But the internal tools are being used now?
No, we're making some final changes to them. They're very close.
Okay, I, I've just just trying to, there are a lot of different softwares that have been described. And I know that you started out with about 10 softwares, different software systems, and we've just seen a presentation of several more. So I remember that the I remember that the audit report, the management audit report recommended that there were so many systems that it was hard to coordinate them. And I, I'm trying to understand why just more systems are being created. But I suppose it's because they just weren't adequate.
No, that's, that's a very good question. So actually, we moved away from a number of old antiquated systems, like for instance, the admin system. We moved away from the reliance on those systems. The AssessPro Classic Camera System was upgraded to the AP5. And the only tool that was brought in was the Power BI dashboards, which didn't exist, but those are tied to the camera system. Those are extracting data from the camera system. Other tools, like what we talked about with the GIS Viewer, those are just being upgraded. They're, they're being developed and improved. They're not additional.
Okay, but that BI system, is that a created system, or is that a turnkey system that we just purchased? Is that something that was developed for us?
That is something that was developed, yes.
One of the questions that was mentioned in there, I guess what I'm confused, a little confused about is that back in June of 2007, I think you're saying that AP5, AP Access Pro 5 still isn't functional, correct?
No, that, it is functional.
Oh, it, oh, we're using that system?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, I thought we were still working on it. I'm also concerned about the, you know, about the customer service messages that we've gotten. And I'd like to know how customer complaints of, in assessing are tracked.
How they're tracked? Well, so generally, they may be reported to either the admin supervisor or to myself. I'm happy to say I haven't had all that many that have been tracked. We address the issue in our weekly meetings, and we make improvement along the way. But honestly, some of the complaints that I received early on were more of tools, like I mentioned with the development of the comparable sales tool. We had some complaints by residents on that tool not being user-friendly, and we're updating that for them. But other than, we address them head-on when we receive any complaint.
Okay, so there, that was one of the questions in the, that was one of the items that was discussed in the audit last year. So I wondered if a system or a procedure had been established around that. But it sounds and I'll just limit my questions to one other. Why do you think we're having trouble hiring a assessing, a chief assessor? I mean, it's been a while, hasn't it?
It has. It is not from lack of interviewing. It is not from lack of marketing. So if you look throughout the field, there's, there could be any number of reasons. Chief assessors are not in abundance. The assessing field itself, it's difficult to locate people going into the practice. Quite often, you'll hear assessors say it's not something that they said at five years old, "I wanna grow up and be an assessor." So it's, I think there's a shortage in the state, and that certainly lends to it. But I, I think there are other concerns that certainly have been voiced to me by people in the field.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
President Wiltshire, you're muted. And I have a question.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you. Actually, it's not so much a question. I just wanted to comment that the inspectors, I think I was one of the first homes that the inspector came through to, to measure the, the property. And we actually invited him into the, into our backyard if he had wanted to do so. He said he didn't need to do it because he could do it by electronic measuring, electronic. It was completely non-invasive. It was very quick in and out. I've seen him through the neighborhoods. As a matter of fact, we ran into him as we were walking the dogs. I think it was on Monday, Sunday or Monday, right on Manchester Street, so between Ward 3. And I think he was popping over to a house in Ward 2 also, so it, it's completely unintrusive, non-invasive, and it's, it's easy for the homeowner, that's for certain. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Kleiner. Thank you, Mr. Mersovich. Appreciate your time tonight. Thank you. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the July 14, 2020, Special Meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You are 15 years in the holidays.
And that motion carries. We are adjourned from our special board meeting at 8:05 PM. And I'm not gonna waste any time. I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order July 14, 2020, at 8:05 PM via teleconference. Prayer will be offered by city clerk. To Lovering and Alderman Jettie will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.